Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much. Welcome to our Board of Education and Cabinet work session to look at our district priorities and to also look at what our equity metrics has become over the past year and where we are in determining what's the evidence and the data that we need to support those indicators. The purpose of our work today is to review the district's priorities as they align with the equity metrics. What we are going to do is we're going to review the data, provide feedback, and then come up with meaningful suggestions for improvement in the process as well as the data. So as we get started, I'd like for you to look at, you have two packets in front of you. You have your mid-year review that we did in terms of our equity metrics. And this was our mid-year update, which looks like this. And you also have the information from the very beginning of the year, which looks at the metrics that we developed. This has been sent out to all of our administrators and teachers and staff, et cetera, to see where we stand with regards to equity and how we are looking at measuring what we say we believe in and what we say that we want to do. If you will turn to slide three of the large packet for the district priorities. The priorities really were developed out of COVID when we were doing our AARP surveys with our community to see how they wanted to prioritize the work that we do with our AARP funding. After we did that survey, one of the things that we looked at collectively was that these results were just best practices and things that we saw that we needed to do as an organization throughout our curriculum and throughout our practices. And so our district priorities, so looking at social, emotional, and mental health supports for our students, educational technology, safety and security, our ventilation and air filtration with our HVAC systems, and accelerated learning and academic support. At this juncture, we are not looking to change those priorities because we are, you know, still in the midst of achieving the goals that we've set forward. So we are really advocating for at least one more year, if not another year, with these priorities now that we have our equity metrics to back it up. Any questions about our priorities that we are looking to move forward to the 22-23 school year? Comments? Concerns?
The order of the priorities could change because some of those things we may have achieved, at least three quarters of the way.
That is correct. That is correct. The order could change. We also have disseminated our survey today. We've distributed our survey today to get feedback from our community with regards to where do we stand with these priorities. Remember, Fritzi?
I understand that equity categories and equity work is supported by the district priorities and vice versa, but it's very hard to tell how we're moving toward completing the district high priorities by looking at some of the equity metrics. For example, with social, emotional, and mental health supports, for example, none of the equity metrics that are here specifically speak to, you know, how many social workers, like, let's say, social workers and how many just child and staff ratio, how many kids are receiving counseling services, that kind of thing. I mentioned it with feedback last time. I'll say that again, it's really hard to tell. It's great, maybe even discuss these separately because, while I understand they're all part of the same picture, can't really line them up to measure these.
Okay. And that's something that we could look at through this process. How do we identify the indicators and the metrics? How do we marry those two so that it can be clear to see where are those things, for example, in the data collection that we are showing the social, emotional wellbeing, that we are showing the educational technology? And so sometimes it's embedded in our thought process and we, because instructionally we may see it, but we need to make that more explicit. And so we can look at where does that fall as we go through this process.
Right, and I think specifically this is social, emotional, and mental health supports, not wellbeing of students. So it's kind of, you know, that's different.
Mm-hmm. Again, we can do that through this process and see how we show it and how it aligns with those priorities. And I think that's part of the work that we're going to be able to do here. Okay? Okay, so the first thing that we're going to do is let's look at the first indicator. We can work that out together. And then you'll have an opportunity to work in your respective groups. So you have a list of questions on the agenda in terms of the process of how we're going to go through this. And so let's look at the equitable student academic success. And so one of the, that is the equity measurement category. And so the indicator that we're looking for is that evidence that racial disparities in student success are narrowing. And then we have a list of data that we have collected. What I'm going to ask you to do at your tables is look at the relevance of the data to support the indicator, provide feedback on streamlining the critical information. And that's where we are with this large packet in looking at what are those data points that we have pulled? What does that look like? What more might we need? Or are there things that we don't need because it may not be applicable, even though that's what we thought then? As we think now and go through it, we may want to streamline that a little bit. And then what meaningful suggestions for improvement are aligned with our vision, mission, and goals to help us streamline this? Okay? So I'll give you a few minutes to work through just this first one, the first category of looking at the equitable student academic success. So you may begin. You have about 20 minutes.
Are we doing this together as a group or?
You're doing it at your tables? And then we're going to share it out because it's too big to just do it as a whole.
But this is going to be going into the best of.
Yes.
Do we need to turn on our volume?
Turn on your, just to make up, this is where they turn on their volume for? Oh.
Just a breakout, small breakout.
Just in the small, but right now you're.
We're supposed to be in a breakout.
Not yet. And you're absolutely asking the right question. This is what we thought. I remember you put all of this together. This is what the initial thought is theory. We need it. But now that you're in this, is this really what we need? Or is there something else that we need? And if it is, it's fine. But is it? So that is absolutely.
So my academic, first, I think, first slide, slide five, is three because that's the biggest. So that's, so one is, so look at this. This is, do you have my form? Because I have some reviews. But such a money, how, oh, twenty-five.
Identify the participating.
Slide seven, it's our.
Well, that was, I want to, I'm a part. How would you relate to that participation state? How many questions?
I think, I mean, I would say it's, we don't have anything specific. About breaking down, how, how.
Performance and R. There's like concentration hours or something.
I guess it's, what percentage?
Students. Because. The higher, of course. We also want to know how, how, what comes out there. So do it like this. You're breaking down, you have a marriage. It's not some stage. So why not?
When you say participation, are you looking at, because I agree, you know, Yala, right? How do you measure participation? Is a little challenging. Are you pointing out the brings down that are in older or less?
I'd like this, look at teachers.
Go to slide nine. And it starts with the middle level honors. And it shows how many students are in. And then we have each of the subgroups broken down in middle and then also.
I was just looking.
And I do think, too, that there are components. And that's right. I mean, it's one thing to say that this is, it's the thing, what is next is how successful the students are? What are the task rates? And I think that that is it, like, your task rate to be at the end of the session. And we need to have that information. Because we're at the end of the year already. We're over the done. So once we have that, we want to. X number of students in the room. X number of students, ten, that involvement. And then those students, X number, X. That, you know.
Because.
That only gets to the fact. Which, yes.
Also, I wonder. Like, extra, like, outside of the.
Is percentage or something.
Any questions? I trust.
So. I'm just going to talk out of my, we're going to talk out loud. We're going to see if this is all three.
I don't know, we're in front, so you can talk.
If we were to look at, like, all of our, we're talking about Yana, my, what are the touch points that they have? You know, because I know they have all these other activities. What is the touch point between the way that they are just getting toward academics? Because we have separate categories. And they can be on that. This gives me, how much of their time is spent? I don't know my own changes. And how many of the mentors are paying for it? Or the, and they need to ask to be invited to help them be like, inside, and then be in that. So if you understand, maybe that's something that wouldn't be charged, so this is not a school to try and attract them. Because that would really, but we would, they would secure that. And they're, they just have to park there. And then it's a little.
So you're saying, so like, we'll take those two methods. Understand where the students are academics. I'm going to say.
What's.
You can request that. But there are those people who are charging. Track. Send the, there's tutoring, not entirely sure. So do these programs have these great tasks?
Some of them do it and some of them just. I can say for those two guests, is they come along because they have compassion. They have, they. Then out of that, out of the sorority, you have college educated degree women and students are in their field. Some of them are university professors, et cetera, or accountants or something, everything they need. And they put, and so they, they do everything. They work with, that's, they're, they're. And that's not to say that they're not doing great job, but other things, just that everyone doesn't have. But for those that do, and we can have an accounting.
Even before the counter. I just want to know, how many do you see separate? I mean, I have to see track, or actually.
Sure, yeah, I was, see, I was probably, and said, like, I used the terrible word, and it said, like, not necessarily. Or they, how many of these students are in the health support? Because they come, or to your.
Many of them are.
Like, they're.
No, it's not. Dr. Ryan Olson?
Yeah.
Because that's actually into these other. Even though. That's my question there. Student success, being on academic? Let me ask a clarifying question.
The beginning of the slide. So we think we have.
Because they did that. Yes, we have raised.
This is like, everybody's sort of saying, they go. Yeah.
So, and then somehow, minimizing these secondary.
I don't see it, I don't see it. I don't see the time that's.
So we talk about like. Do you think it?
It's on your, in.
Oh, I guess, we can see there about colleges in there. I guess, would you want us to have a, this is right. Next one. I'm saying that respect. Every respect. Maybe, maybe it is all kiddos. We want this number simply wrapped here for that. That, we should get all this stuff out. And it includes the great future. You guys.
I always.
But I'm wondering, I think this is. Yeah, this is all the answer. Because if I want to talk for a wrap, it's, it's taking to relationships. This, this. Such as. And it's getting, especially it's, it's wonderful.
Game.
One. Yeah. Or. Here over here, there's.
Anything that, if they change. We did Spain and find this.
I want them to know.
With some of these, some of these. In this, so. Want to use.
Geometry.
But it's good number.
You see that huge lot.
I guess. I think it's, and maybe it's, maybe it's more, it'd be like a pressure. And say, then.
You know, it's like, you see, that, that, and we can track that. But to your point. They're going back to.
Wouldn't it seem to sound?
It's very, it's.
Is it like, can't. Nine. Well, I'm spending. The chips, he likes to read.
We have more in class. That's right. Right. Even though we may have less. And those are in there.
Thriving. Yes. Yeah.
It's like all of you.
So, somewhere.
Idea.
I don't think that's Sharon Gaskell. Yeah. See, great representation.
Funny, I just play with numbers. Show progress. Captain.
So. Say, through. Yes, that's the mission, like, seeing.
And that happens, that happens.
Once we have their.
What about, because, because.
So, did you make this?
Oh, I didn't say.
First, somebody's husband, it's in the A. Like, it's nine, or, like, people aren't historically. Yep. That's going to be, first time. We have interviews.
That's.
We have the.
He's something that. We did. Correct.
That would be evident. I like a lot of that. Happening every time.
Yeah.
I just. Yeah.
We need, yeah.
Because we actually. Oh, that's mostly.
Rain is there.
Two.
And then you. That's close to.
Yes. And they. That's.
Girl.
We have began. So. But you're, you're. Sorry. If you have a foundation. Three, two, three. You know, people are.
You know, one thing that I think is missing on here is specifically. Every. And then. Studies.
That was my.
Yeah. 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 Um, take our. Whatever's up. First. Got. And. My thing is, we can, here, see, what, in the break. It's not necessarily total. Students. Of those students to these classes is the beginning.
Probably.
See, getting smaller, because.
Well, he's not. That's.
We're staying and. Do you have anything about the data? Is something I don't understand? How many hours? Additional time.
Well, that would, that's something. People leave. And I don't know what exactly. There's summer establishment.
Right, it's the idea. And their. Very, not, I am following, but that would be.
I mean, that's, you know. Um, you know, at the younger age. Higher, more demanding.
So, as I think, I was, the summer original program.
Oh, considering.
Like, not a lot that are summer school. Some stuff.
When you start.
I know our raw data, people think.
Take that number, like, generating.
It's happening. It's.
And then you. See, those programs are working.
It's like a beer. Overall, you know, it's like, okay. But it's just something to.
Just the hours spent. Looks like something. Four, three. Like, one.
You would, you would.
You just, that might actually seem.
It's not.
Let's just say, a number of hours that we need students.
We have. Total number.
It's.
See, did we lose six for hours? On a grade. Students. To be forces. This is. Or to. Or to see that as more, as more mentoring hours.
You have about three more minutes. If you have not done so, select your spokesperson to share how your information of what, just your reflections of what you talked about.
Is the. Oh, no, but.
You had a point I want to put in. Now, at least you get your. So, what is your, like, your grade? Then you try to define the picture to page. Which is to be festival. Or we have. One year to the next. So we got. Very soon.
Oh.
I think I got.
These are the things.
Yeah. Well, I guess, what's your implementation?
I think, I think, your point, like, I mean.
No. The four, five.
You may have had anybody.
Just a nice.
Yeah.
It's easier than this. I think, yeah. Sort of, if they don't rather be, care about this. But, you know, that's, that's more of a second.
No, we're. You.
Oh, I. Are you ready?
See, all these.
It's never.
Because, yeah. Could get.
Supposedly, not like that it should, but nothing. Like, the vice versa.
We worked. But.
Actually, you have.
And you. And. Entering them. So can be. Here.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and start to share out. And it's just sharing out your reflections because this is kind of setting the stage for what you're going to do in your individual groups with your individual topic, for your small groups together. Okay? Does that make sense? I hope so. It may be in my head. Okay. Uh, so we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, we'll start with Matt and and Vice President Smith, please.
All right. Um, I think we we talked over here, um, and we really felt like the information that was presented was really relevant to support the indicators. We thought these were some good metrics. For us to be reviewing. I think our enhancement or recommendation on this information is maybe find a way to get some more details at the middle school level. And even the elementary level. Our thinking behind this is, you know, uh, graduation rate is at the end of the line. Um, honors courses is way down the road. Is are there other metrics that we could continue to look at to catch them? Um, going from eighth grade into ninth grade to kind of see where that progress is. So be mindful of having too much data, but also be mindful about what is meaningful information. Is there a way that we can? We can ask that? Um. If those are. What.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Um, at this time, I'll come over to Ron and Mr. Princey.
Yeah, still annoying. The data points to here than on my last year, we think are all. Um, although we did know that there were several that we didn't find in August that were not part of the launch of. In the region that are also. Um. Pass rate of advanced classes to some factor for education. At high school level and then the regions. That probably was. We didn't agree about the fact that we didn't have. And so. And maybe it may is. Barometer. Um, and some elementary data. All had the same the same point as well, that maybe some more. Uh, we don't know in fact and progress was actually at the elementary level. In particular. Um. Grad rates. By. You know, the table of margin, not a good, non-economically. This bench students. Is that what so perhaps. And then as well. And we also thought that, um. In presenting the information, just the table that shows our overall graduation rates would be would be helpful because it's such a. You know, it's such a, something very broad. And a lot of success is really demonstrates to folks that overall success that that was made along the way. And not not actually to get the some. Certain. And a separate table. Just the. The. For. Grad. Graduation. Um. Uh, and one other suggestion we add for the, um. Olden students in advanced classes was, uh. Both the demographic breakdown of students who are old in classes, but also breakdown of students in each subgroup. Who are old in advanced. Get. Example. Yes.
Let's see. Number. Melissa.
Thank you. Um, firstly, acknowledge two things. One, that it's easy to easier to do the imaginary part, but it's more difficult to. Bring it down to the implementation level, especially who is going to collect this. And the second thing to acknowledge, as you pointed out, we start leading into other metrics easily in this part. But, um, what we agreed upon as a group is that we would like to. For one, see if there's a way to find evidence of any sort of pipeline programs in the younger grade. Things like, um, summer scaffolding bridge programs, Avid. And whether that produces results of more students, um, closing the gap in that regard. And also any evidence of first time roleies, like folks who did not do honors or advanced courses in, um, younger grades. That would still prove that in middle school and elementary, we have the apparatus. Coinitional skill that students are bringing. And if it's possible. GPA. Um, any kind of measurement of GPA and participation performance year to year in all the subgroups. And that was the evidence. As far as data collection, we were wondering about attendance being a data point as well as, um. If there's any way to measure like the awareness of the field of opportunities when you get to high school, like how much, how many people did not know and now they do know that. There's these.
Thank you.
Um, so we, uh, appreciate extra comments from the rest of the groups. Some comparable things. We really think about the way this could be summarized and synthesized to be more understandable to someone with less knowledge. And so one of the things that I think people will be finding compelling is the concept of a graduation rate gap. Looking at the differential between subgroups can be really helpful. And while that information exists on these slides, you have to kind of look and do some subtraction to see if the gap is closing or. Right, so really just put it right out in front of people. The overall graduation rate, the gap is closing. You just look at that gap losing turn up from fifty some odd percent on our journey towards eighty two percent total graduation rate and the graduation rate. White block gap is down to like four percent. That's a really easy story to understand. And so something like that to headline, not that we wouldn't want this level of data and we need this and we do get it in the graduation report. That we that we do every year. But perhaps it doesn't all have to be an equity report. It could be summarized and synthesized and referenced back to the graduation report. And that gap closing concept is really easy for people to see whether it's progress or non-progress. And Lori introduced a concept that I wasn't familiar with or I forgot about, which is the district, the state CCCR metric, which is called the readiness metric. Which is a single number like graduation rate, which we believe could be presented by demographic breakdown. We could look for a gap closing on that. And that includes enrollment in AP, IB, university high school and CTE programs. So if we could show closing the gap there at the top level, at the summary level. Um, then we could again produce some charts as necessary to back up the understanding that the top line is looking for in the gap. Um, we also noticed at the middle school level that we've only got included, um, like middle school charts, uh, ELA and MAP honors, not science and social studies honors. And there wasn't a consolidated graph like there is for the high school, which is like all advanced courses. Any student using any IB, university high school or IB. For middle school, we didn't have that top level picture of any student, any honors, which would also obviously have to be. Advanced. Living environment. It was just. It's so consolidating like a middle school. And just in general, thinking about this report as being a higher level, more limited information with references. You don't need to look at graduation rate at June, August and five year and six year, maybe just enough to look at. The August, because that's the one that we are measured on. And the six year, because we think, I think, I think we philosophically believe that's the most fair way to judge our students. Who have, um, so many obstacles to get to graduation. But to look at the. I think the only thing we may have missed, unless I missed it, is when we're looking at the middle school and honors. Is, um, having that all inclusive chart of any student, six, seventh grade grade or adding sixth grade. Um, enrolled in one or more honors or accelerated class and not necessarily looking at for this purpose, uh, ELA, MAP, science. And that's all. So again, the top line is like, are we closing the gap between the number of students enrolled in each class? We have to be very careful about how we present that gap and how we talk about it. Because we have, we don't want to say white, black, and then ignore our other subgroups. So it's it's a little more complicated than the imaginary. Excellent term, very easy. The actual data presentation a little tricky because you do need to present all the subgroups. But you can't just say the highest performing subgroup versus each of the other subgroups. Um, and look at it that way. So it would be four gaps that you're closing. Same thing with. Non-ethon. That gap, which is very interesting applications for our work. So that's that's it.
And. I'm sure. Allow the fact that when you're preparing out for the community. Let's keep it simple. Bring back. Just highlight the same importance. With evidence somewhere that you want to get to, they can get to. Um. We also not a. In the A should be part of that. It's exactly a list that's. Beyond academic success. Actually, it was longer. There's also a reason why. What's happening in elementary. High schools. Are things getting off. Or somewhere. In the year we want to. Um. We don't. I'm going to the. Ratio data. And the fact that. When the the gap was closing, when you look at the Hispanic, the Asian population. Things are going the wrong way. When you look at the honors, the AP classes, the IA classes. AB hasn't changed much in terms of option. The groups. Again, Hispanic, Asian is like. IB seems to have been embraced for the African-American students. And not so much again with the Hispanic or the. Asian students. And seemingly not much has changed. So we got stuck on what is it that is not working for these? Maybe you didn't get the. We didn't take the directive. What we should be discussing.
I think that's really the tension of the school exercise is. We all want to see, we want to figure out why and get some hints, right? But part of this exercise is just figuring out what. Like, how do we tell people what, but we'll be telling them why?
Because the why comes with that delivery of quality instruction. That's not what this body. Has its knee deep hands in on doing. That's not what any of us are doing. The the how and what happened to the students. We're not the body that's doing that work. That's where it filters down to our administrators when we take this forward to the district administrators. For that leadership professional development. And then they look at their individual schools to say. What programs are working? What programs are not working? Where did we miss that gap? And then when we collect that information from each of the schools, then we can bring it back up to the high level to say. Here are some of those things that we're missing for X number of students or within a particular population. Because I can tell you. We're not going in Cecily and Lori can back me up. It's. We're not going to have an. There won't be one thing that contributed to that decline in our Hispanic students or Asian students in a particular program. What we're going to find is that there will be themes, but individual circumstances will warrant what those disconnects are. This body. Doesn't do that work. That's the work of when it happens right at the school level. And then we collect that information and then we share it right back up to say. Here are those disconnects that we were seeing. And then here's what we put in place operationally to address those disconnects. Because we, it's it's not, I don't want you to think that it's not going to be addressed. It will be.
No.
But it happens at a whole different level. And then we report that back up to the board to say, here's what we were seeing that created those disconnects. Here's what we have looked at doing. And then what is your input for of education with regard to, are there other things that you may know that we could look into? To see how we close that particular gap?
Right, I think why we were. Because whatever we did, we did it for all everywhere. So it was a sort of an equal implementation of a new technology, a new software, a new supplement. That worked for some. Didn't work for others. So in terms of equity, what is that other thing we may need to do for these groups? Or the big scheme of things of. What is it? But I. You're right. How happen the other discussion to be the administrators and the schools. Right. Why did it not work with certain subjects?
And then there may be some things, uh, so for example, when you look at some of the RMPs that we had. That started a little bit later in the year. Maybe it did capture those kids, but we didn't capture it because of when the reporting was done. But then we can see, and that's the wraparound services too. Um, that goes beyond the academics as well. So if we, there are so many moving parts to this. I I will say, I appreciate the fact that, um. When you look at all the components that have just gone into this one category and this one indicator. I am going to say that's that's full time. But yet we have all the other categories as well, because we do know that everything is interconnected. It's going to be connected because at the end of the day, what we're really looking to do is develop the whole child. It's not just one aspect.
Right. Subjun, thank you. Um, I was going to say, uh, the question that I keep running through my mind is. Does this, whatever the data is that we're using, does it allow us to know, one, that our kids have access? And also, well, introduction and then access and opportunity, those three things. Because also when I hear folks say, oh, you know, like this group or that group is not in IB. You know, my first question is, do have they, were they familiar? Were they, um, did they make a choice not to based on familiar or some other reason? So I just wanted to also ask that question here. Can IB recently sure that at the end of the data collection that, you know, that basic introduction, access and opportunity has been achieved?
Also the regular learning. Is it something to do with certain minority groups that they would have the expertise at home to help their kids with the group class? And how much of, how much is that pay or what? You would think that minority in general. But here we have groups between minorities that are showing differences. Right? It's.
I can see the rage is also. Reality is we have this very high level data, right? It says, yes, we are closing gaps. No, we're not closing gaps. And then there is the next level of discussion, which is identifying. Self of the words pretending is describing, which is there's going to be a summary. Closing the gaps these ways, we're not closing the gaps these ways. And here are the things that were intended. And a lot of whatever.
And the results.
Right.
I had to work this talk on the, uh, closing gaps part. Um. So. It also could be a little misleading because it could be closing a gap, but. Uh, or.
Yes, the top could come down instead of not going up. Absolutely. You have to look at the overall. Right, that hasn't been our experience recently, but that could help.
Because right now we are on a trajectory where we're seeing our our high level kids continue to move up. And our kids that were closing the gap, they're moving up to close that gap. So everything is moving up. And and that is the trajectory that we want to see.
But it definitely can happen that the gap closes because the.
Because. Or or the top.
Top could go down, but the bottom could still be going up too.
Right, and that closes the gap. Uh, yeah. So.
Your overall graduation rate goes down.
Right, somebody said somewhere that we have to start with the overall graduation rate. Just the overall graduation rate, which is actually just one column on this, the one section on one of these. Showing that huge.
Slide two.
Yeah, slide, 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 actually. Side five in this particular presentation. See on that far left graph. Twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, twenty, twenty, twenty one. It's just skyrocketing. And that is, you know, as we all know, a result of the X number done at all the high school trying to keep every kid going across the stage. But it's also a little factor of the region's exemptions that has contributed to the marked increase in those two years. So depending what happens with the global missions and the graduation requirements. The graduation rate as a whole is going to be questionably meaningful. As you're looking just at that, because the graduation rate in twenty twenty or twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen is never going to be roughly, right? About two years of region's exemptions. And by the time it's all said and done, we anticipate there's going to be some graduation requirement changes made. So it's a, it's an awkward metric. That's one of the reasons why the NWA is so powerful is that we know that it's the same each and every year. There's no change to.
And you do go along one. We are the only district that can show that, yeah, everybody is going up, but the gap is decreasing. And look at the other district. They can see it reasonably well. I think.
I was going to say something similar, which is. Notwithstanding for a lot of our metrics, that everything. Lots of that perhaps. We still have that numerical comparison to the state average because same crazy things and the same rules were. So we just. Like everybody states. And also when you look at the state, the state does provide on my website, which might be. Put into summary category, the state average by race. Right, and so that is a really interesting measure to look at because it helps normalize the, um, the impact of. State. They're doing extremely well. For certain stages.
So we're going to move forward now. And each of you have your end of your group. And each of you have your end of, your group indicator that you're going to look at, your group category that you're going to look. And so I'm going to give you the same thing that we did with this one. That's what you're going to do individually at your tables with your group. Have the conversation about the relevance of the data to support that indicator. Provide feedback on how we can streamline some of that critical information. And then make meaningful suggestions for improvement aligned with our vision, mission and goals. And so you can locate your particular category, your topic, you have your metric information. You also have where we are so this far within that particular category. Okay? You're going to have about twenty minutes. And then I will continue to come around and clarify questions. And in this time, Mr. Baker is going to give you some additional directions.
One second. This is the point where you have not already joined your breakout, your specific breakout meeting. You want to do that, you want to turn your camera on. Captain members, when you see your button go to live, that reason is in fact streaming. And that is when you want to unmute, begin the conversation. So hold your conversation until you see your live light on, then you're good and begin, okay?
You mean to unmute or?
You, the only focus on mute is one captain member, they have that direction. So you'll slowly start to see your live lights come on and then you can unmute, captain members and start chatting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And feel free, as you start shaping your thoughts, to put it on chart paper so that I can at least collect that from you. That's going to be our documentation. So then when we go to summarize, I can pull up just your chart paper and put all the information together.
And you want to make sure all of your speakers are on, all your speakers on.
As long as I know that, then I know. Very much so. It's one way.
We'll go into the whole rock as I know. You're the baby, those are the ones that are here.
Yes. Consider whether that's.
So there is, I'm sorry. There is some trend data. It's like under some.
What I get. And we don't have, yeah, the word that isn't. How widespread is that, that's a club? I guess it's.
And they'll make your work ethic.
Right, but that goes to like. How is the challenge here in China for this? How do you then get your stash or? You know, we do this one.
I mean. And then what about, and, uh, so one, there's like, uh, my story, there was other.
They usually, so one, in sanitization, like, so we see.
Yeah, it's. Crossed off, they are called the club. So that, so here's, so here's the question. Showing that because you generally. And I think of like, that's all about, I know, now the, now the, uh, we can't. Do the activity, he would log in right then, click those hours in, pass for the business, because of the date. Yeah. It, that's, and they want to, they want to have that response. So that, it comes to you. And we're talking about the. The, like, that's. How do you, you as a student, I should all give it, that's what's good, it's, you know. Now, you see, it's a major, I definitely.
If you guys have your next one, T, we, uh, we're saying, I think, I think.
I think.
You know.
I would say the time they like the teachers this year and the seniors this year were all.
She did.
But I watched that.
It's been a great.
And they didn't say they're getting.
So but I love.
That's.
Yes.
Something that's.
I know.
Nice.
But.
But for me today, you know, coming up to a lot of knowing that center and coming to a conference. Is there immediate concern about it, right? So then you probably will be like, that's. The. You got. People who don't like that represent that, but like school explained that exactly.
So we got a.
More.
So what are all of them?
I just think.
You said that also in your analysis, like you're setting application and.
Well, so it's.
And they. We know so far.
So.
Sharp.
They have.
Yeah.
So we don't.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
They're there.
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 It is.
That's.
On system.
Do you want to be my. Good. You're gonna.
I mean.
Right.
We said.
Oh, my head.
I mean.
I mean.
Sure.
Yeah.
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 Information.
So.
So.
It's not.
So.
Still. I I think. Yes, totally.
Yeah.
I'm.
Also.
My.
Yeah.
The.
Yeah.
For.
I. The score.
I didn't.
What.
They're.
They're.
They.
Absolutely.
They're strong.
Since that's the.
Case.
I just would think.
That.
And a lot of times.
I'm here for.
And why they pay.
Well, although.
I was thinking. And I'm glad you. But I'm. There's. Had the.
Even when.
I don't.
I think.
That.
We can only be. They did. Yeah. We said like the. Or. It was just. It was. Eight. But it did so much that shouldn't. You know. That's. Well, you've been as a payroll. Not only. I always know. Yeah. Overall. I'm gonna put that as like.
It's.
Payroll analysis.
Yeah. My. I'll see. Drive with you guys.
Yeah, I write into your first. Okay.
Three.
Oh, she's.
My back.
I agree.
I think you're really behaving. Get quiet.
Too.
I said.
Well, I hope. I like. That's the.
I'm.
She's.
Well, and then.
She's.
I mean.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, hey, hey.
I mean.
Part.
I have the.
And.
There's.
A lot of the other things. From we share out.
When you would add. So maybe. The data.
And.
She has.
That was.
You had that.
Um.
They have.
That.
So.
And that's. That might be.
Or.
Breakdown. Uh.
Karen.
Breakdown. And. And maybe.
Put in.
Real.
Maybe. Include another.
Well, I mean. Sorry. One number. Something.
But also. My.
Here.
Exactly.
And then.
So.
And.
Also.
Well. Yeah. And. So. Late. Don't. Yes.
Yeah. Let. Yeah. I'm. This.
See, interestingly, at my job, so. There's. And I think they have to. Have leaders for the.
But they don't.
For the. And I don't know. On my one floor, you know, I switched jobs, but my one floor was like with men across the board, but now I know it's on the other floor. That. Like. So I don't know if they're doing that or bits, but. That's a great point. I never thought about the representation of. And are we not? Is that. Like. Are we not? Really? Men. You know, like. Then once.
Oh, what?
I'm. Yeah. Uh. I. Somewhere. And. You know. I'm. On the. Yeah, this makes it. And.
I will also.
But.
You.
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 You sound.
Certainly.
That sounds like it in a. But that's where again. If we. We see the dynamic here. Maybe they don't stay.
You have about four minutes?
Oh.
Four minutes.
And. I guess. You know, there's a reason working down by. But I was wondering, instead of you all working down by. Leadership. Leadership. Like left. So you can say. Right.
Yeah.
Think so, maybe not another. Intra-metropolitan. Like. Same.
You know. One of the things that I have. So.
Like. Cause you. Like leadership. Or. You.
Race.
And. And you know, like you said, which. And. The. Why is race. As far as. Of the. You don't. You know. And. Cheer. We have. So. You know, what if. Question. And also. That you're. Supposed to talk about. Rebuilding. Impossible. Right. There was always people that they did not know. Like we can't have it. It's like. So. Most people said I didn't. So. We just. Ranting. Like. Maybe. So. So. We're. We're. People are. And it's like radar. And. About. We. Like. Inviting. Where they. Partners. Partnering. Do you think? We don't have. So. Yes. And.
Specter.
Projects. I want to be able to. It's. Like. First. You. Greater. Down.
It's. So.
But. Could be. The. That. Would they. Then. That's. The. That.
And.
You. Yes. They can see that.
As. As.
They have. And. They are.
State. Then. Cause we have.
Earlier.
State. State. You're.
But it's. Not. Not. Very.
Used to be.
You haven't. Seen.
Okay. So that's. Behind the scenes of bases. You flagged. Which. We. At. Yes. Um. Cause I I looked into it.
Higher. Well, you kind of. Pointed to that. One. They got. Like.
I'll. Since. In. But. Here's. He was. Well. That is. Well. I'm.
He said. Yeah.
Then that's wrong. Your roles are missing, right?
Yes. That's. Cause. Right now, we're. Back. Now. It's. High. So. I mean, eventually.
So. I understand.
Very. If you know. And we. This.
I'm. That's a good. Yeah. I'm. I think. You ever listen. That. That. That may could be the. What. They don't. Maybe. Put it down.
That'll. That'll. Go down by. Fire. Yeah. That. Right. So. So. Just. Yeah. I have. I believe. She's from. Or. To be. Such. So. It's not. That I get. It's not. Trying to.
Yeah. I mean. So. So. Yeah. So. For evidence. Um. Yeah. The.
But. What I. Especially.
We can do it. Yeah.
You're not. You don't have. You.
We talked about. And. We have. We have. We have. Right. So you put the right stat. Data.
I think.
So.
Or.
I wonder if. We're. On.
I mean.
The.
Oh, now.
So. Basically.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll put it aside on the data. So. We'll be. But it's.
You have about two more minutes? Four. Each. Six. Five.
So that's. The data. Space. And not. Like. Now. And.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I think.
There's. There's. Some. Better. Cover. Or. As.
Like.
Well.
Sometimes. They.
Or. Ronald said, you know, happens with. That. But there's. Um. What. Those. You know. Go back. Yeah.
We.
Yeah.
You.
Some people. For. Community. I think. Yeah. Yeah. Were both. So. So. Right. Were. So. Were. Today.
And. You're supposed to share. By.
I don't. And. The other way of. Stay. And that would say. Listen. And I would say. The. And. Say. What?
One more. Please. Men. Like. Trust.
The. Elaborate.
In about thirty seconds and then um we'll start sharing out. Yeah.
Why she. So. I put it in. Off the standard. You. Except. Yeah. Um. It's. No, that's more. Uh. No, that is. Like. Standard. And. I wouldn't.
I'll give you a little bit of timeline. Uh, we're gonna try and have each spokesperson from the group share out in about three to four minutes. Just to make sure that we have enough time to get around to each one. And then we can have some open discussion. A little bit of back and forth, just because I want to make sure that each group has an opportunity to share out their information.
Um. And then. It's. Hard. Data.
I should let her. It's. It's. Thanks.
Oh, you. Oh. It's. Poor.
She's. That's. She's. Right. That. Community partnership. I was like. Little. Line. Yes. Little. Much. Much.
Started talking about that. Um. Oh, no.
The only thing that I show is I. Print. Like. It's all. Yes. Um. Yeah. And. I. Larger. Larger. That's what. It's. I am. And I'm really. Person. Always.
I. Do. I. He's. Well.
My kids. One day. I'm. On. I think. In. Trend. That's. That you. Have. A lot of. Personally. My kids. They. They. That's.
If you say. Best. Who's. Against. You're. Person. That. Why are you.
Right. Now, it's the other way around. What is that? Why you're writing a person? What is that? Like.
I would say um. It makes that.
It's.
They put on. Remind.
I have to. If I can find it. If. You know. I don't. I'll. I'll. They. Right. That. The. But I. I want to show you. The way that my grandmother. We have. Second. Three. And why still. At. Okay. So. Two. Six. And. Seven. It's all. I mean. And then. The. Pictures.
Um. And.
That's the only. I'm.
And. They're.
When I. Tell. You. Mentioned. My. Grandmother. She had the. And. I didn't. Like. Right. And. Right. There.
I'm not. Having. Well. But. And.
I'm. My. My youngest. Is. Yeah. Is. Um.
When you expect. Yes.
Yes.
Starting.
Free. That. Right.
And. What. And. Yep. And.
Wow. She. Don't. So.
Well.
Or. Get.
It's gonna be the challenge for our department is if we, when we do that, we will do that next year. If, I'm just, I'm exaggerating for effect. If only we were ever getting pictures from is JV cross-country, I can share it to begin with. That is, that just is not what we're talking about. So we're gonna be, we're gonna be very careful about taking photographs of the pictures that you share when you receive them.
Yeah, because you asked about you being here for more than three months. And they, why are they putting their pictures on our front? Our team's been leading baseball, they won seven games in a row. No, here's an opportunity, you've got pictures, share with us. Because it seems like some of the pilots go, they have forgotten who's on the air. They have to be, priorities are different. We have more important things to do. But at the same time, this can be done with the boarding defense on the part of the board. We're sure enough to begin.
All right, we talked about it.
And we, we, we've looked at that and we will continue to look at it. All right, I'm gonna move to another group now.
And I just wanted to add my homeschool messenger. There's no, there's no tracking school messages entirely. They can't make a connection with schools. So that we, we, we can't track that. But anybody who has any contact information in these schools will automatically pull, pull me communicate. So if you have any, yeah, homeschool messenger or who if you don't know.
Does school messenger have bounce tracking so we know if like, we're actually, somebody's catching, catching on the other end?
Yes.
So that we can try to tell how we successfully manage that way of reporting since we have, we have a practice.
Before we go down to Rabbit Home right now, I'm going to move to another group. Mr. Yagowski.
This is our team. Well, thank you. So Mr. Yagowski did some preliminary homework and did an analysis of our buildings and grounds. Basically started with a leadership survey about how satisfied you are with the upkeep versus do you, do you converse with the foreman? And actually, the survey data was hierarchical, that it's the correlation between not being satisfied and not speaking with the foreman. He also went very deep as far as not being able to really identify like a, like a bill, like a role of the staff. So he went into payroll because next week we're paying you, you work here. And did an analysis of A, who's working, their, their shifts, whether it's first or second shift. Um, school size, like the actual square footage of the school and how many of your employees are there? As well as the population workload and things of that nature and the needs of the population there. And what we've established or were able to see is that there may be a need for some standardization, um, which is not necessarily at our level because it's civil service driven. So there's some things like, there's a building, um, maintenance, then it's building maintenance one or building maintenance coordinator. So it's, there's not many reasons why there's these disparities in the naming and thus the pay. And we were correlating that to basically, can we have some standardization across the board so there's equity in pay job and job duties? And will that basically act as source? Because there are some folks who have been maybe in a position for a certain amount of time and they don't see like their pay going or whatever. Again, not as school districts or in civil service. But when we onboard them, we can let them know that the set the expectation when they come and arrive, this is school district stuff, this is civil service stuff. And whether, um, we just had expectations for A, when you work here, this is what we expect to do. And then also can we correlate to incentivize people with, for example, COVID created a scenario where we could not like mandate attendance. But move, as we move out, could we incentivize people for, you know, whatever streets of attendance of youth, public work, work leadership? And things of that nature. Um, other things, so interestingly, he did a payroll analysis and when I knew I was in this group, I was thinking about how do we analyze the budget? And we do so kind of under stress at a certain period of time, once a year. And we know what we need at that point. So we know we may need foregrounds people, we know we need two teachers. But are we doing like the broader analysis at this point about how, for instance, a bigger project of things in time? Is the one luxury we don't have at that time, can we analyze the budget to understand? We need foregrounds people, but also what, where do we need them and why and what's this and things of that nature? Can we go that much deeper at budget? Um, another is of course, we always talk about growing your own if you're moving from within. And that could also circumvent the issues where people are saying, I'm stuck in this position not being paid. And how that contributes to morale overall, because that contributes overall to their profits too. So pay, um, standardization, uh, pay equity, being incentivized, growing your own are all things we felt could contribute to morale and should also contribute to work ethic too. Um, also, so we didn't have to have a ton of time, but we looked at the HR data we had, which went into gender and then went into racial distribution. So we were wondering, if we get some more data about HR, about where is representation of genders and races and leadership positions? And what kind of like, you know, where do we see people and if there's any changes over time? And capital projects, again, did not have a ton of time, but we do know we have a lot of mechanisms to communicate with the public, whether through surveys, forums and external programs. So we were suggesting a data point could be, not that we don't do this, but there's always somebody who did not know until the day we're about to pull the trigger. So could we have increased stakeholder input and involvement at a much earlier stage? And also different touch points throughout the process, which we do. But this more so that that's a data point that we can always keep track of that. The community, the staff, the families, yes, numerous opportunities and how much deeper we can go. And I think that's everything. Oh, we talked about on board, yes.
Thank you, Erin. And we're going to use that to segue right into HR and retention, our hiring and retention.
Thanks. So we, uh, we felt the evidence as listed was great. We thought that those good ideas were in key ball. Um, we did make some tweaks to the data collection, um, just kind of restructuring some of it and also kind of building more of a flow from beginning to end. So our first, uh, data enhancement is just, well, not enhancement, but we're just, we're good with the quarterly analysis of staff demographics. We think that's a great indicator of who's in our system, who's coming into our system and how that relates to staffing gaps across units, uh, related to our students. So we, we think that's good data. We then kind of adjusted the middle section and we kind of put it into two categories. Um, we want to understand what sort of grow your own pipeline initiatives we have. We're thinking that if we have a good understanding of what we're currently involved in as a district, that's gonna be a good starting point for us. And this is, this is the recruitment stuff. So we want to categorize the grow your own initiatives. What connections do we have to teach programs? What student teacher initiatives do we have, things like that? So that's the, the recruitment. So once we understand that, then we can track progress on those things. The other is retention side. Um, what retention initiatives we had, um, and, and how, what are those, what do we have in the district? Meaning, what types of mentor programs do we have? What sorts of resources do we have available to staff? Meaning, uh, we pursue a grant with the Teachers of Tomorrow grant, for example. How, what do we have, again, setting the stage and both of those so that we can track progress moving forward? Um, and then finally, we had the starting point of staff demographics in the system. We also want to get the same demographics of those exiting the system. Keep it at a higher level at this point, so we're pulling out the idea of number of staffs getting tenure and whether demographic breakdowns. Good point, maybe that's really too fine of a point at this point. So we want to just know, like, what's the racial and gender breakdown with staff that are leaving our system? Um, what's the exit interview data that they're giving as they're exiting the system? Um, and then we're thinking that the beginning and the ending really gives us an idea of the data. And then once we get a baseline, um, then we can track progress. And I guess the last thing that we didn't talk about it. So once we know what our grow your own initiatives and retention initiatives truly are, then we'll be able to start to market those, which will then help us on the recruitment side so that staffs know where we are, our community partners know what we're doing, um, and how they can help us with that.
Yeah, I think just a couple of things. Um, because in the evidence, it talked about the recruitment process and programs. I know I got myself a little bit hung up on the process and that's sort of like, how does all of this work? And what kinds of requirements are in each of these initiatives, you know? You know, where are our belief systems? So kind of got out of that. But I, I think it's important for especially to understand that for the marketing side, right? And thus also for the, that retention stuff. Um, I think the, uh, the other thing is that, uh, right now, Matt said we're trying to, you know, establish a baseline, but we do have some programs that are, you know, just beginning, like, you know. So I think being able to talk about, uh, the status of say our students, uh, our internal students into introducing families teaching, like when that kind of takes hold, we begin to, uh, start collecting that, who's in, what are we doing to track them, so forth. Um, I also spoke, uh, said that to Matt right off the bat about our connections to, um, teacher prep programs. And I know that there are, there are some, I was looking to see if there are some that we have, like, let's just, I'm just making up a number, like four. We know that there are four institutions that have diverse programs. Are we, what are we doing to establish those relationships? Are we meeting with them every year or going back to them? And then another question I had is what other incentives might be being offered? And I know that gets complicated for lots of reasons, some unions, associations, one. But, you know, we've talked about this at different points, like, is there something worked out around housing? Uh, you know, uh, with maybe the city or we, that, this sounds like Charles Tewby thinking, uh, to me, sorry. Um, but, you know, uh, just something like that that would be an incentive to having folks come to Albany and, and make it their home and to invest in teaching here. Um, so, but that's all like around process and whatever.
Next steps.
Next steps. But, uh, I think this gives us a good baseline of where we are and what we have going on and what we need to do to, to, you know, get the, the word out there and, and get the, these initiatives off the ground.
We go into our student success beyond academics.
Success beyond academics. Uh, I'm gonna pick up where Vicky left off about value systems and what the importance of that is. One of the thoughts I had is I was thinking about how do we present this data in a way that it might tell a story? Is that there could be a introduction section that talks about what is the goal? Why am I showing you this data? So for ours, I think it's very simple. Um, we need what's the goal and why, right? The goal is more student involvement in extracurricular activities. And the value system is we believe that students involved in extracurricular activities do better in school, right? That's our belief system and why we're leading this data. And understanding that helps you understand why we're showing you a jillion charts about using what, right? Because why are we showing that? Because we really believe that that means students will be more successful. Um, when you look at the, and I'm on this document here, there are basically, um, three kinds of things down the left-hand side. There's the equity teams piece, participation in equity teams. Then there's the enrichment activities like music and athletics. And then there are the sort of discipline carrying chunk, right? Those are the three chunks. On the right-hand side, you said student equity teams again. Then you have being in music and chorus. And then you have disproportionality in referrals. And then you have end of year agencies who just been, who's whoopsie and he needs to go back on the academic side, all right? So in our thinking, we'd like to kind of consolidate again, similar to what we said last time, into one big number. What percentage of students are involved in enriching activity? And can we look at that by subgroups? And can we see if there are gaps between the subgroups? And how could we collect that data? Some of it's really easy to access, right? And I think that's why this was so music heavy, because music, you're involved in music, you're in the majority, you're favorite, we got you. So that's easy. Athletics shouldn't be much harder than that because final forms presumably requires a student ID, because I've tracked this into school tools against the initial contact information. If it doesn't, that should presumably be an addition to a required field for final forms. So we can use in athletics very easily. We could summarize that and then deduce the kids, right? If a kid is on three teams and they're in three music ensembles, they're a kid who's deeply enriched, right? And they would count as a deeply enriched kid. Then there's the whole other more complex thing, which is all the bajillions of after-school clubs and things that we do. That's much, much harder to measure. The one tool that we have now that we can start with is passport for good. So we've got to people putting in their data for passport for good. And the superintendent's, um, brainstorm on this is if we could get our club advisors to get kids to lock themselves into passport for good when they show up at the club. Right? Because that counts, right? Participating in key ball, you get to put that in as an hour of community service. Then we could access the passport for good and bring it into this large deduce number. Again, we're talking just like we were before about one date number and then more data to follow. Um, Jero TC was another one that we felt would be easy, that that would count as an enriching activity. So we've got music, athletics and Jero TC that are super easy. We've got passport for good, which could be an entry point for clubs. And maybe that's a second tier play, but we start with just music, athletics and Jero TC. Um, then we talked about the disciplinary data, right? So, you know, what's the value there? Are we able to assist students to perform better in school when they're involved in a lot of referrals, right? And so, um, in talking with Lori, we're looking at perhaps percent of students with any classroom referral and percentage of students with any office referral as two different things. And then we had an interesting conversation about how do you do that? Is it just one giant number for K-12? Usually people are gonna look at that kind of like, what does that mean? Like referral for kindergarten is so different than high school. So maybe we need to then break it down either into elementary versus secondary or elementary, middle, high. But that's when we had this idea that maybe this whole report needs to be broken down, either by elementary, secondary or by elementary, middle, high. So we've got our six or seven categories, right? Academic, research, community, housing, retention. Many of them, you could do like the elementary section. Here's our evidence how, on how our equity is improving at the elementary level. Here's our NVA data, here's our club participation in elementary, whatever these things are. Middle school, same thing, high school, same thing. Instead of doing what we've been thinking about it today, which is like, first, we're gonna talk about academic data, elementary, middle, high. And then we might not do it, elementary, middle, high. Reverse that and unify grade nation, because people can concentrate on elementary at that level. That was a thought. And then the last point was, oh, the very top thing here, which had to do with student equity teams. We think the student equity teams are evidence of our process improvements, but not necessarily evidence that students are having of a, you know, despair, reduced disparities in non-academic measures of student success. So it's an important component of our work and what we're doing, but it maybe doesn't belong as one of the metrics like music and athletics do. Because I believe we're careful in the composition of those to make sure that they're diverse. So they're not sort of a natural representation of who's choosing, because they're, they're composed, um, student body. So I think that's it.
I think it's how the overall, like, engagement piece.
As a club, right?
As a club.
Right, as a club. Yep. But not as like some sort of unique thing, but they should be narrative because they are a very unique way for us to make progress. Whereas we're figuring out what to do next. So that's, that's what we ended up on, and so, but it's not pretty.
Do we not keep track of club membership?
At club membership, when your kids are older, in my experience, in the staff, in my experience, it's much more fluid, right? You can be a member of the GSA because you came once, then you don't show up for four months, then you come back on Friday. You're still a member, so like, you know. Or maybe you don't come at all and then you turn up once in the middle of May. Like, it's, it's not like, it's not. Yeah, it's just a question of how meaningful the data is, right? And what is a club membership? But yes, and I don't think that they do really have a, it's not that. They actually. Unless it's a grant funded.
So we talked about community engagement in the context of the categories that were on the, um, break down from last year, which was to say contracts with community partners at the district level. Um, so that, we weren't sure entirely how to quantify this. What we had on here was just a list of various community partnerships, but it didn't break down which organizations were at each school. So you couldn't tell if opportunities were applicable, uh, among students at the different schools. And Ron pointed out that even if you know how many community agencies participate with each school, you don't know the depth of engagement where one, one place may come in and give an hours assembly and one may, or maybe it is one or one meets. So that's hard to tell. But we do think it would be helpful to list as a start, level one, to start with listing the community schools partnerships by school and then the ARP partners and what schools they're currently working at, just as a start, rough baseline. Uh, and the next, the next two, we wanted to identify, we agreed that it was good to identify that participation in the Board of Education District-wide committees was reflective of our demographics and that participation in, in our families in PTA and PTSA is also proportionate. I had a question on this, which was, would we like to start as our baseline by making sure that we have reasonably representative PTA participation by school? And that in terms of community members that are involved in board level, in board activity of district-wide committees, make sure that they represent each school? Because I really wasn't comfortable asking people that come to a board meeting to comment, what do you participate in PTSA? To identify themselves by the racial, ethnic background? And I'm also not comfortable visually tagging them either. So I think to start off, because of the diversity in our schools, maybe we just start making sure, sure all our schools are representative. And then maybe later on, talk about, do we think people would feel comfortable as they join the PTSA to check a box on a form, or a check a box thing I'd rather not say? You know, if it's something that's our goal to be representative and we want to talk about and discuss race, we're comfortable with that. But we don't want to turn anybody off by being like, turning participation into some kind of interrogation. Um, we realize not every school has a formal PTSA, but for the ones with a formal PTA, it would be easy to get official membership numbers, presumably. If we could get official membership numbers for the past several years, because it's important to be able to track, uh, trends over time. You could see the total number of PTA members and have that number expressed as a percentage of enrollment at that school. Uh, for schools that don't have a PTA, they may have some other similar organization, like Montessori magnet group, which I think that one has official members and memberships. Not every parent in Montessori. So then for those that have less official things, we would ask schools or school organizations to start tracking attendance via assignment sheets and use attendance via assignment sheets, maybe average attendance over the year or peak attendance at one meeting. I'm undecided as to what would be the most useful, but use attendance via assignment sheets as a baseline number for ensuring that kind of engagement. That's it. Oh, for the board, we were thinking, there's only a couple of district-wide committees, like theater and, and first we have DITC, um, that, that we try to really represent people from all those, not DITC, right?
ESF.
For ESF. For something like the theater, we were really trying to represent people from all schools. For some of our smaller committees that have community members, like wellness or curriculum or calendar, there hasn't been a stated goal to have people from every school, it is that it would be too large. So I don't know how this would lead to ID each school that's being represented, but we could do that. We can also look at, we have people that comment on the, comment at the board, they sign in or they email us or they submit a video. And 95% of the time, they just can debate which school they're associated with. So that could be another easy proxy with data we already have to say, hey, look, these are the percentages of each school that are representing the people that we talk to.
Lots of new members in the special.
Oh, yes, the special.
The BLPs.
Yeah, as we thought, we, you know, there are a number of committees that have a couple of interns that operate both the district level and the building level. We could use 2021, 22 to baseline, like they would bear with the participant, our students for the area. And then moving forward, our, with our goal being, make sure that the building health committee is different than district-wide. So making sure that our board and district-wide committees, that there's representation throughout the school year on various committees that we have. And I, I'll take a tentative. Uh, we have representation from all of our schools throughout the course of the year, not in a committee, obviously. But throughout the course of the year, every school has like a team, a person.
Thank you. If you want to do any posters. So I know our time is winding down, but I do want to take a few minutes and have you go around and look at other posters. Take your marker with you. If there's something you like for the star by it or a plus sign by it. Um, if you have another suggestion, if you could just write it on there as you've heard things. Uh, I am gonna give you about three minutes to do it. We're just gonna run about five or six minutes over. Uh, but I do want you to take about three minutes and just kind of go around based on what you've heard. If you want to add to, take a marker and go for it. I'll give you three minutes. Especially the homework you did.
Yeah. Still, you sound weird, but I love good answers. Like, especially like a good spreadsheet, especially like, looks good. It's.
Yeah, that was right there.
Remove, consolidate.
That was ours.
You do it both ways.
Okay. Okay, there we go.
It's gonna stay, too many of them.
My hours are, you know, in school. So is that around?
It's always too, yeah. You have singing? Yeah, there is to be, yeah, there's typically persons with a battle to artists. I'm wondering if they made it like.
That was the one we round for.
So. If you saw him singing, you'd see him actually singing.
Oh here they have the older brother with our sister sister Okay Mark basically said our cousin or something yeah They look just alike yeah
Because I'm taking it out on
You're getting it over again Yeah it's funny that's what that's the thing that came out Yes I will think of something Well you know
I think that is
So ladies and gentlemen we're going to wind down Where we are right now in terms of next steps we will put all of this information together uh and send it out in the next few weeks so that you can look at it and provide feedback and then uh we will use this information to help shape our district's door part with regard to what would that look like and then how do we start to share out the progress that we're making with regard to our district priorities and our equity measures questions We will be presenting our district priorities at the July twenty first is it the twenty first or the twenty second twenty first at the July twenty first meeting so you will have a formal presentation of the priorities and then the adoption of those priorities would be at the first board meeting in August and so we'll start sharing this out with our principals um we'll give them a high level tomorrow but we will start sharing it out so that their understanding the types of information that we're going to be collecting even though they may not be directly responsible for it they would be the ones most likely where that that entry level point is there we want to make sure that we're getting the most accurate information that the principals would need to have as well as within our divisions any questions comments or concerns as we close Seeing none I want to thank you all for all of your work tonight um and we really appreciate it because this is the core of what we do and it will set us in the right direction for the twenty two twenty three school year so thank you very much and have a great evening